Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, March 11th, 2021, meeting and public hearing of the Penfield Planning Board. We will begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as you know.
That was... Row, row, row your boat in the round, kinda. Okay. Due to the public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to the Governor's executive orders, including Executive Order 202.1, which suspended certain provisions of the open meetings law. Meeting is being video recorded and is being broadcast live on the Town of Penfield's website, and also on the Town of Penfield's government access channel, Channel 1303. Meeting will also be later transcribed. There are opportunities for public participation. Unfortunately, Town Hall is closed to the public, but we invite your comments. And you can either call 585-340-8771 and get in the queue with the control center downstairs, or you can go onto the Town of Penfield's website and submit your comments online. There should be a link on the homepage to tonight's meeting. And like I said, we welcome, we welcome your comments. So with that said, Lori, who is remote tonight, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Bastian?
Bill, you're muted.
Bill, you're muted.
I'm muted. I'm here.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Sangster?
Sangster, aye.
O'Connor?
O'Connor, aye.
Wyser?
Wyser, aye.
Cometh?
Cometh, aye.
Gray, aye.
Okay. We'll also make another announcement. Tonight marks a pioneering new moment for the Penfield Planning Board. We normally start our public hearings at 7:00. Tonight, we begin a new chapter in our history where we will begin our public hearing immediately following the work session business that we have to take care of, which tonight is not, not a whole lot on the agenda. So with that said, we do have minutes from the February 25th work session. If somebody would like to move to approve?
Tidings motion to approve.
Canower, aye.
Can we have that motion and seconded?
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay, that passes. And Doug, would you like to take us through our tabled applications and action items and whatever we have for the work session?
All right, so we don't actually have any tabled applications. We do have, or we have 85 Sovereign Drive as a tabled application. So we did receive an email from the engineer. He stated that due to ongoing issues with COVID, that the applicant at this time has no intentions, at least for right now, on moving forward with the project post-COVID or post, you know, most of the restrictions that are going on. He may look at coming back to the board with updates on that regarding that project. So at this point...
Is he gonna withdraw, or does he want us to keep it?
He's not. We have discussed, we have, you know, we do have two sort of separate categories that we can put projects in. We do have tabled applications, and we have what we call held items. We have another application that has been a held item for a short while, so...
Yeah, we can put this in held items for a while.
If you'd like to put this into held items, I believe it just would require a simple vote.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to transfer the 85 Sovereign Drive? I guess I'll move. I'll move that we move that over to the held items.
Tidings, second.
Column. So we're moved and seconded, Lori. Tidings, seconded.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Action items?
All right, then we have one action item. 2161 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, more commonly known as Target. Back in, I believe it was 2018, April of 2018, they approached the planning board to update their facade. It included a sort of a wood grain looking tile along the exterior parapet there and the clock tower parapet. They reached out to us, stated that they've had issues with maintenance. The tiles are easy to crack, and because of the exact fitment of them, they're really difficult to replace, and it's becoming a maintenance issue for Target. So they are coming back to the board looking to remove that exterior. We re-waterproof the current facade and redo the ephesus and paint it in a color that is similar to the existing color of that, that sort of wood grain tile. It'd be that kind of brownish, I think it's called raisin brown on their materials. They did provide a physical sample there, I think AJ is holding it up, of what the ephesus material is, as well as the color of the building. We do have Casey Lieberman with Kimberly Horn. They are the engineering firm representing Target on this matter. So if you have any questions, feel free to direct them her way as well.
Okay, just a quick question. Casey, the...
Yes.
Why not stick with some other type of wood grain product that appears to be wood grain? Because it was kinda little nicer.
So the impression I have is just, you know, like, majority of all other Targets do have ephesus, so I think they're just trying to keep up with the pattern they have for the rest of them. But the plan with this ephesus, the raisin color, is to just match the existing stone wood as best as possible. And this stone wood, just as a correction from before, it has already been removed just because it was a safety concern because of the cracking, and they, you know, went to remove it as quickly as they can just to be proactive. But in terms of why it wouldn't match the stone, the stone wood, they're just going at it in what will last the longest in the long run, and ephesus is waterproof and it's the most maintainable, so that's that.
Yeah, from my understanding, only our Target and the Target Invictor had that stone wood look. The ones in Henrietta, Webster, and Grease were just standard ephesus, still painted red with the white Target logo. So I believe our store and the Victor store were the only ones that had this stone wood at the time.
Yeah, I'm working with Victor as well, actually, to get their stone wood replaced also with ephesus, so...
Are there other stone-like or wood grain-type products out there that will last? I mean, I see emails and things like that all the time that talk about new materials for exterior use. I'm just thinking it was a nicely dressed up building, and we went to pretty great lengths back when it was originally constructed to make it look nice. And I kinda feel as though it's going to be looking not as nice.
Okay.
I'm just one person on the board, though, so I'd like to open it up for other comments. Bob, you go first.
Yeah, I guess, you know, that's a fair question if there are other, to AJ's point, other possible materials that have maybe a little bit better look.
Terry, do you have any?
Yeah, just Casey, is this, are you trying to match it all with the other commercial buildings in the building there? Is this similar to what they have, or it's completely different from the rest of the plaza, I should say, I guess?
That is not something I'm sure about, but in terms of the color that's going up, it'll be as close as they can get it to the existing stone wood that was there. That's why they're going with the raisin, and I believe I sent over the sample. But in terms of the rest of the plaza, that's not something I'm not too sure about.
The rest of the plaza does use, in some places, is an ephesus, but a lot of it is a metal paneling facade. So like, we just saw City Mattress, they came in a short time ago. You saw the exterior there. It's a lot of metal awnings that sort of harken back to the Chase Pickens day, Chase Pickens days of that plaza. So Target was sort of unique in its style, because it did not look like the rest of the plaza.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, back when, when it came before the board to be built, they initially came in with a, you know, their corporate standard, if you will. And during that period of time, I happened to be in Ohio, and in Strongsville, Ohio, I saw a plaza that looked like a village. And the Target in that village looked like it fit right into that plaza architecturally. And so took some pictures and came back and said, hey, can, why can't we have it look kinda like this and have it be a little bit more architecturally pleasing? And, you know, we became further than what was originally proposed. And I, you know, part of me feels like we're going back a little bit.
It is a little bit of a different look, but, you know, not to disparage the rest of the plaza. But, you know, Brad, if you were to drag that a little bit right, you could see what the existing plaza looks like.
Understood, but that's, that's already been there.
Yeah.
So how about, Bill, what are your thoughts?
I'm all set.
Okay. Jim, any comments?
Yeah, AJ, I'm not opposed to replacing that with ephesus, but if that's what they're gonna do, first, I think that they should give us two or three other options for different materials. If one of those options is ephesus, I'd like to see some shadow lines, some feature strips, some things that would add some depth and textures instead of just, you know, large surface areas of synthetic stucco.
Okay. Fair point. Casey, do you have a fairly good idea of where the board is sitting?
Yes, yeah, it just, yes. In terms of, you know, switching away from the ephesus, I think the only issue is like, why we had to, like, you know, change the stone wood is just because of the weathering that was happening. So it's like, what I'm not sure about is that if we were to go in and find something similar, we can't guarantee that it's going to last just because of weathering, so... But I could look into other options, but I know that Target feels pretty strongly about the ephesus, because that's pretty much what they're just keeping with all their stores now.
All the stores all over the country, or all the stores in...
Well, the ones I'm working with in New York. All the ones, I'm on all the New York sites right now for New York State that had stone wood, and all of the stone wood has completely been removed.
Okay. And so far, every, every one of them has gone with this, this ephesus solution?
Just because the previous option was, became a safety concern because of cracking.
Okay. All right. You know, the rest of the board, I guess I will maybe do a straw poll. Do we vote on either accepting this or asking for a couple of options? What's, what's everybody's?
I'm not opposed to taking a look at some other options if she wants to show them to us.
Yeah, I agree. If there's some other options out there we can look at, yeah.
Okay. So, part of me hates to ask you to do this, but if there are a couple other options along the lines of what Jim has suggested with the shadow lines and, you know, something that's just not a big expanse of the same, let's call it monolithic color, that might be a strong term, but... Something that's gonna still be...
Oops, sorry.
Something that's still gonna look kinda upscale. So people can still call it Tarjay.
Casey, is there any other ones in Monroe County with something that you're looking at? Any of the other stores besides this one in Victor?
In terms of options other than ephesus, no. Every, all the other stores I've really only just been submitting building permits for, just to get the replacement approved. But in terms of the ephesus that's on the building, I mean, there is gonna be some shadows, there are gonna be some paneling. It's not just gonna be all flat, straight across ephesus, so that's just some, that's on the elevations I sent in. That's just maybe something small to keep in mind, but I'm not sure if other options of the material is the possibility. It's something I'm gonna have to ask the architect, but that's something I could see.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Pete, do we need to make a vote on this, or...
I guess you could table, vote to table it for consideration of those other options I would call for.
Okay. All right, somebody wanna move?
Sure, I'll move to table this application and receive some options as we discuss.
Got a second? Anybody second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
Thank you for joining us, Casey, I'll follow up with you tomorrow.
Yeah, Casey, thank you, and hopefully we can get this all squared away in two weeks.
All right, sounds good. Have a good one.
You, too.
All right, that was all we had for you regarding action items and work session items.
Okay.
If we'd like to transition into the public hearing, I think we should just make an announcement, go through, do the, your same beginning of public hearing announcement.
Yeah, all right, that's a, that's probably a good idea. Okay, so we are going to move on to our public hearing portion of tonight's exciting program. And just to, while I give everybody an opportunity, public participation is welcome. And you can call if you're area code 585-340-8771. And alternatively, you can visit penfield.org, www.penfield.org, and make comments electronically, submit them electronically. So I will read our statement that we read at the beginning of every meeting. And due to the public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to the Governor's executive orders, including Executive Order 202.1, which suspended certain provisions of the open meetings law. This meeting is being video recorded and is being broadcast live on the Town of Penfield's website, www.penfield.org, and on the Town of Penfield's government access channel, 1303. Later, the meeting will also be transcribed. The, there are also streaming devices and streaming services that you can access this meeting on, including Roku, Apple TV, Amazon Fire. Just search Penfield TV in your device's app store, and it should be free. There are going to be public participation opportunities for each public hearing application, and I will announce the appropriate time for public participation for each application. I may, I'll hopefully try to remember to pause and bring up the phone number again during, during those periods of time. So if you're watching from home or wherever you are and don't, aren't familiar with our process, we have three items on our agenda this evening. The way the process works is Doug will read a description of the application or the legal application. Then we have the applicant or the applicant's representative will join us on the Zoom call and present what, what their project is or what their request is. Once they're complete with that, the board will have an opportunity to ask questions. Once the board's questions are completed, we'll open it up for public participation, and we definitely welcome your comments. It's what this is all about. We're all residents in Penfield, and we want the best town that we can have. So Doug, with that, please read our first item.
All right. McMahon, Leroux Associates, PC, 822 Holt Road, Webster, New York, 14580. On behalf of Ciara Huber, am I pronouncing that correctly? And Melissa Delugio requests under Chapter 250, Article 11-11.2 and Article 12-12.2 of the Code of Town of Penfield for preliminary and final subdivision and site plan approval for a three-lot subdivision with associated site improvements on the existing 20.017 acre property located at 1410 Penfield Center Road. The property is now reformally owned by Richard Hayman and Lisa Maston and Zoned Rural Agricultural District RA2. Application number 21P-0004, SBL number 110.02-1-41.1. I believe we have Greg McMahon, Lisa Maston, and Ciara Huber, and Melissa, all on the call with us here. Greg, I'll let you take it away and present the project.
Okay, thank you, Doug. As you mentioned, this is a 20-acre parcel on the north side of Penfield Center Road, currently owned by Mr. Hayman and his daughter. The applicants are granddaughters and are looking to each build their family homes on the property. It will be subdivided, we're proposing a three-lot subdivision. Lot 1 would encompass the existing house, some of the outbuildings, and a majority of the property. Lot 2 is approximately 2 acres, and Lot 3 is about 2.3 acres. Lot 2 will have a one-story, single-family home, and Lot 3 will have a two-story, single-family home. Public water, septic systems, and utilities. Perk tests have been completed. The Health Department has reviewed and approved. The plans are ready to sign, as has the Water Authority. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Terry, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, Greg, just a couple of questions there. Obviously, the lots meet all the zoning requirements presently, correct?
Yes, they do.
And you've had time to review the PRC comments and respond to those?
Yes, we have. We responded to the comments and submitted revised plans.
Okay, any issues?
No issues.
All righty. And I understand you're gonna also be removing some structures on the site.
Well, there's, the only, there's a partial structure on the site. It was, I'm assuming, an old barn with a rubble stone foundation. The structure itself is gone. There's some rubble stone walls, but there's a portion of that over the property line, and they've been in the process of removing that rubble stone.
So they will be taken care of. Okay, and you've addressed the sidewalk waiver issues. I understand you're presently working on those?
Yes, we submitted a letter to the Town Engineer requesting that we...
All right, so that's still under consideration at this time, correct?
I believe so. I believe that's going to the Town Board.
Yes, the sidewalk waiver request was tabled by the Town Board last night at their work session.
Okay.
I think that's it. Thanks, Greg.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. McMahon?
Yeah, I just had one question. The, the remaining acreage for Lot 1 would be how much?
It is 15.59 acres.
Okay.
So that, go ahead.
No, it's, it's most of the rear portion of the property, some wooded. There's a small creek or stream that runs through the property that the town has asked for, or a, an easement over, which, well, we will be providing that information to the town. There's some federal wetland back there. But it, as I say, it's about 15, almost 15.6 acres.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's, it covers the entire north portion and goes a little bit east and west?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions, Bill or Jim?
All set.
I'm going, AJ.
Okay. All right, at this point, I would like to open it up for public comments. And let me see, looking at my screen here. Uh, let's see. So... Not sure if this... Okay, I have a comment here from what looks like Lisa Ann Maston, 1404 Penfield Center Road. That's, and she says, I would like to be able to talk live, thank you. Lisa, if you could possibly call in if you're watching, 340-8771?
Okay, I'm on Zoom.
You're on Zoom, okay.
Oh, I'm...
Sorry. Okay. And who else do we have? I think this one is for Jackson Road. I'm not sure. Karowski, 1124 Plank Road. I think that's about our next application.
That is one of the neighboring properties on that address, so I don't believe that's for this application.
Pardon me, folks watching, this screen is, I feel like a 95-year-old looking at this. Okay. All right, so with no, no public comments, I guess we do have...
We have a draft AF, but I do not have a draft approval resolution at this time, no. We don't, we don't have one complete.
Okay.
So if you'd like, you guys can table it, and we can, we can get that completed into you for our work session on the 25th.
All right, I'll make a motion then to table at this time.
I will second. In preparation of a...
In preparation of the resolution, correct?
I will second.
Okay, so, so we have it moved and seconded?
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay, so just you folks, just so you know what that, what just happened is we tabled it so that staff can generate and prepare an approval resolution for it and we'll vote on that in two weeks. All right?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you everyone. Greg, I'll follow up with you tomorrow.
All right Doug, thank you.
All right, next item.
All right, application number two. Application number two, McMahon Leroux Associates, PC 822 Holt Road, Webster, New York, 14580. On behalf of Gerber Homes and Additions, requests an informal discussion before the board with plans for a four lot residential subdivision under Town Law 278 with associated site improvements on a 7.19 acre lot located at 1357 Jackson Road. The property is now or formerly owned by John and Teresa Bresnewitz and Zoned Rural Residential District RR1. Application number 21P-0005, SBL number 094.04-1-21.11. I believe we have Al Leroux here on the call with us to discuss that application.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We'd love to have a 278 cluster approval for this subdivision, simply because it, under the, under the cluster, the front lot, which is our lot one, will be more consistent with the houses on that side of the road up and down Jackson Road. Also, what it does for us is it brings the north line of the lot down from where it would be if it had to be there by code. And let me just say that we have enough room to do code everywhere, but what it would do if we, if we did a code lot one, it would wrap around behind the house that is to our south and it would, it would pinch the entryway so that the 20 foot wide road, private drive in, would only have seven feet on the north and south side of the road, which is kind of tight for services, et cetera. So with the cluster, it moves the property line, north line of lot one to the south, removes the area that goes around behind the house property to the south of us. And now we have 15 feet on the north and south side of, of the proposed 20 foot wide driveway. So it really, it really opens it up nicely. And we're, we'll be able to move the driveway away from the, the parcel that is to the north of the, the proposed driveway. All the lots are big, obviously, so it's, I think, I think a cluster makes a lot of sense in this regard and I think it, it helps everyone and it keeps our lot one consistent with similar properties up and down Jackson Road. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Leroux. Jim, this is, I think you're the lead guy on this. Do you have, do you want to start off with questions?
Yeah. Hi Al, so the first question that I have for you is whether or not you had a chance to see the comments from the property owners on that lot immediately to the north of lot one?
We have.
Okay, so has there been any dialogue between you or the developer and those property owners about satisfying their request for some kind of a berm or a buffer there north of the entry road?
We can certainly do that. We saw that. We can certainly do it if we, if we pursue the cluster plan, which moves the roadway 15 feet, you know, seven and a half feet south of where it would be under the conventional plan. So that we've got 15 feet in there and I think we could do a nice job and, and landscape that area and put a, put a short berm with some, you know, I'm a graduate forester, so I know what to put in there that will, will stay there. So it's, it's, you know, certainly, it's a lot more comfortable with a cluster plan and a 20 foot wide road as opposed to the conventional plan.
Sure, so oftentimes when we end up, you know, berming an area to create a visual buffer, we end up with an unintentional ponding of water. What's your thoughts on, on if you install this berm and plant some vegetation on it, will we be trapping any ponding water north of the berm that would be a hardship for the existing property owners?
Well, there already is a swell on their, on the property, I'm talking about the Huntington property to the north. There's already a swell that runs down along their south property line and we would be, we would be suffering that with our, with our drainage. And certainly we won't do anything that's going to impede drainage from their property. We can't and won't.
Yeah, just wanted to get that on the record. This property is served by public water?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so just also wanted to note that the roadway needs to be widened to 26 feet at every location where there's a fire hydrant.
Okay, so noted.
So.
We haven't done anything with it yet, but that's part of engineering and we'll take care of that.
Yeah, okay. So other than that, I have a general question for staff, AJ.
Okay.
With respect to the review of the cluster plan versus the conventional plan and whether or not they, they had any issues with that.
We, we don't have any significant concerns with it. You know, if we look back, you know, there was a previously approved cluster plan on this, on this property back in 2005. It was a seven lot cluster that included more, smaller than allowed by zoning lots on it. So in this case, lot one, they're retaining the same, or the same, about the same size as the lot that they had previously approved under a 278 or the planning board had previously approved under a 278 back in 2005. We, we don't foresee any significant issues with it.
Okay. Okay AJ, I'd like to turn it over to the rest of the board.
Okay. As Doug was saying, you already, well, you've already received 15, 16 years ago, an approval but for seven lots, correct? 278?
Yes.
And this really is actually reducing it from seven to four.
Yes, so of that original seven lots, one was eventually subdivided out. It is the current Bresnewitz residence along Plank Road. The lot that, the, the remaining lot, 1357, what we see here was the original, the remaining six lots of that seven lot subdivision approved back in 2005 as the Birch Crescent subdivision. So in this case, they're just reducing the coverage. In this case, lot three was essentially the merging of two lots and lot two was essentially the, or lots, yeah, lot three was the merging of two lots and lot two was essentially the merging of two lots. Based on the, the previous cluster plan.
Okay. Good. Any other questions from the board members?
Al, you've had a chance to look at the PRC comments and address those concerns?
We have, we haven't addressed them yet, but we've looked at them and we'll address them in the later in time.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Bill, Bob?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, I'd like to open this up to public comments. And I believe we have one from someone with, I'm assuming it's their last name, Karowski, 1124 Plank Road. And the question is, is the site plan as to houses and septic field final or can they change siting? Also, is a septic percolation able to handle these houses where the land is low and swampy? So that is a, it's one, one comment that we'll probably want to, want to address and I'm guessing that the siting of houses is not necessarily arbitrary on the plan at the moment, but basically a general idea and not necessarily exactly where a house is going to be sited. Would that be an accurate statement, Al?
It is, but we did a good job of trying to site the, site the houses. The septic's are sized according to the original perk tests that were done for the 2005 plan and they're in the same location. We didn't find anything that was, we did, we redid the topographic survey for the property and we found some differences with that from what, what was previously approved, but we didn't find any, any areas that were swampy or marginal, the houses we've got up in the higher areas. And so we're, we have no concerns with the septic, so the, or the siding the houses and of course they're just rectangles. But we're going to have plenty of room because the lots are so much larger than they were before.
Right. Okay. Looks like there's maybe one other comment here.
I'm just talking to Al.
Okay. Looks like Stephen Cushman, 1152 and 1154 Plank Road.
Okay, you should be passed through.
Okay, Mr. Cushman, can you, can you hear us?
I can hear you, I am sorry.
My screen says he's still on hold.
Standby.
Testing. Hello, standing by.
Hello, Mr. Cushman, downstairs, can, can you hold on one second, Mr. Cushman?
Sure.
Guys downstairs, if you could turn his volume up, up here in the town hall, in the auditorium, it would be much appreciated because I could barely, barely hear him.
If you need, Brian, we can turn on the, the loudspeakers down here if that, that would help and turn them up.
I'm trying, all it just is.
Okay.
Hello?
Yeah, Mr. Cushman, go ahead, start talking. We could barely hear you, so what we're trying to do is manage our technical volume adjusting skills here as, as you speak.
Great, I'm just calling regarding, okay, can you guys hear me now?
Yes, sir. Yes, we can.
Okay, super. Just a small technical point, a point of order maybe, but looking at your, the map that you have up on the board, you've been showing on the screen, the neighboring properties that you have shown are mislabeled. So my question is, is everyone getting proper notification about the property?
Well, we can take a look into that, but we do, we do do an extensive, we, we do have a neighbor notification policy here outside of our.
Yeah, but first, if you look at 1154 Plank Road, you'll see the name Machamekius labeled to it, along with the one at 1156.
Yep.
And they haven't been on the property for years and years. So my question is, how accurate is this map that we're looking at here?
So when we do send out our notifications, we send out our notifications based on the property address and not the property owner. All of our postcards are addressed to current resident, just because, you know, real property doesn't always keep up with, you know, our data. So when we do send out notifications, we do notify based on the address and not on the, the name of the resident. So, you know, the residents at those properties should have received a postcard. It would have just been addressed to current resident at that address. As to the labeling on the plan, I, I'll turn that over to Al. It could be that they just used data from their original 2005 submission.
Okay, so is all of the data on the map accurate and current?
Uh.
The elevations, et cetera, the property line?
That's, Al, do you, would you like to address that?
They are accurate. We've redone the boundary, we've redone the topographic survey and we'll take a look at those two parcels, 21.3 and 21.2, to see if we've miscopied the, the name of the owner off of the tax records, but we went through the tax records. We didn't copy anything off of the original map in 2005. We won't do that and didn't do that.
Yeah, Mr. Cushman, RPS data too, especially if they're pulling it from some of the tax records, at least right now, some of that, that data is a little bit outdated. I, I know they were, you know, at one time they were about three months out on, on updating RPS data based on recent sales and things like that.
We can double check that though before we go any further with this.
Okay.
But that particular corner in terms of accuracy of the plan, there's the northwest corner of the Cushman property, there was a pin there that was pretty close. And if you go up to the, to the north, the Miller property, the southwest corner and one of the points online was there and that's pretty close. So we're there.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure when I see big errors such as not having the property names on it, but I can understand the, you know, with the discussion that you folks presented this evening. The one thing that I did not hear, and I'm not certain if it was talked tonight, concerned the leach fields for the four homes in there. And the other point is, I'm not too certain what the definition is between these cluster homes and another traditional type of arrangement. So if you could elaborate on that a little bit more, I would appreciate it.
Well, so I can field that one, Mr. Cushman. The, the difference between the two types of developments, conventional plan, this, this parcel is zoned basically one acre, RR1. And there is a, a method to determine a layout of lots and how many lots could be put on this parcel. That becomes the basis for the maximum number of allowable lots. In coming in under Town Law 278 or the, the cluster, cluster zoning or the cluster law or application, what it does is it gives some flexibility to the designer of that particular parcel. So in this case, they wanted lot number one, which is the lot that will front Jackson Road, to be of similar size as the lots to the north and south, so it fits in well with the neighborhood. Otherwise, in the conventional plan, that lot would go over to the north border of your property and you, instead of only being adjacent to lot number two, you would be adjacent to lot number one and lot number two. And so in this case, it's really to help do a better and more sensible layout, also giving the opportunity to have a wider entry for the, for the roadway entrance and, and give some more room for buffering and, and just a little bit more room that way.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't reflect on the size of the home. The homes will be conventional homes, not, not, not small homes. So it doesn't reflect on the, on the size of the homes, it's just the size of the lot.
Right, okay. Fire trucks will be able to access those homes, number two and number three, correct, and four?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. Now, perk tests, have they been performed? I'm more concerned about having the septic systems flow in a southerly direction towards Plank Road.
Those, those perk tests were done in 2005 and they're still valid and we're putting our septic systems where those perk tests were performed.
Okay, so you're telling me then all the perk tests were fine and I should not expect any type of sewage problem?
No, you should not.
Okay, fine, that's why I'm asking the question. I think I've all said that from my points of concern.
Okay. Well, Mr. Cushman, thanks for the, thanks for the call and the comments.
Okay.
AJ?
Yes.
I just might just comment in response.
I just might just comment in response to the questions about the plans, just to note that, I mean, this is a sketch plan, right?
Yes.
So if it were a formal application to come in, you know, this is probably more detailed than we typically get for a sketch plan. But just maybe a note about the distinction between the two different types of applications. But you already talked about it a little bit at the beginning, but...
That's true, it's a good point. And I was, you sort of beat me to the punch, almost like my wife. I'm ready to make a statement like that, and my wife always says, hey, would, you know. So you just did that, Pete, and I'll always remember it. But it was a very good point, that this is a sketch plan. And a lot of those details will be ironed out in the event that they come back for preliminary and final.
Okay, great, because I was under the impression they were looking to start building construction tomorrow after you vote in favor of the plan tonight, but it's a sketch plan. I understand that this is going to be several weeks off yet.
Probably more, several months. They, the process here is we'll issue a letter with comments about the sketch plan. And then they'll probably get that next week at some point, would be my guess. And then they can take those comments into consideration, develop a new changes based on the comments. And then they submit, and we may be, we're already past April's public hearing, so the earliest they could come back for a preliminary, final at this point would be the May meeting, so...
So I do my best to get the sketch letter out within about a week, pending that the board's review of it. And at this time, the earliest they could turn around plans and resubmit are May 13th public hearing. Our submission deadline is April 1st for that.
Right.
Just one other final point, since it happened in the neighborhood recently. There, regarding storage barns and facilities, is this the appropriate area to address that for any future plans that the homeowners might have? Or is that all zoning related?
That would typically be zoning related.
Okay, because our neighbor here wanted to build a 5,400 square foot barn on his property. So I just didn't want to see anything like that be incorporated into what these people might be planning in the future.
Right, so if one of those structures was to be constructed initially, it would show up on these subdivision site plans. But after the fact, let's say somebody moves in, they decide they want a structure like that, then they would need to go, if it's outside the zoning and they need a variance, they would have to go to the zoning board and ask, make a petition for a variance for that.
Yes, so we do have code provisions regarding the size and location of accessory structures. It is in our E-code, which is available on the web, if you just search Penfield Zoning Code. In addition, I would recommend you talk with the Building Department, Building and Zoning Department. Their number is available on our website.
Yeah, yeah. I bet through it, and the proposal was shot down. So, because, you know, it's supposed to be a 1% of the square footage of the house. Okay, but I'm all set for this evening, and I do want to thank you very much for taking the time and answering my questions.
Okay, thanks for the call.
Great.
Have a good night.
Good night.
All right, are there any other comments from board members?
Yeah, A.J., I...
Berg's got one, but it looks like he's muted.
Who's got one?
Jim.
You're muted. Jim, you need to unmute your microphone there.
I'm not muted.
We still can't hear you.
Yeah, I can, can you hear me? Because I can hear him.
Yeah, I can hear him too.
Jim?
Yeah.
Oh, we can hear you now. Did you, you said something?
Yeah, I just wanted to note, for the benefit of those two people that called in from the adjacent area, that the septic systems have to be approved by the Monroe County Department of Health.
Right. Good point.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Al, thanks for the presentation. We will get you a letter out as soon as possible, and then look forward to seeing you in a month or so.
Super. Thank you, and stay safe.
You too, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Onto item number three. Again, it's a sketch plan. And one point of clarification, there's a difference between a preliminary and/or final application and a sketch plan. A sketch plan is an informal review of a concept that an applicant has for a project. So as such, there will not be as much detail, engineering detail. There may be incorrect information on plans. There could be a lot of things like that with a sketch plan, because the applicant is really soliciting feedback from the board, town staff, as well as the public. And tonight is your opportunity and our opportunity to make some of those comments for a sketch plan. So with that said, Doug, if you wouldn't mind getting the third application notice read for us so that we can move on to our next agenda item.
Okay, can do.
And while he's getting his papers ready, remember public participation at 340-8771. Operators are standing by. Or comment online at penfield.org. Homepage should have a link to this meeting. It's all you, Doug.
All right, application number three. SWBR 387 East Main Street, Suite 500, Rochester, New York, 14604. On behalf of Penfield Heights LLC, requests an informal discussion before the board with plans for a mixed-use development project, including townhomes, apartments, a common house, commercial, retail, and office spaces with associated site improvements on 6.63 acres located at 1810 and 1820 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The properties are now or formerly owned by Penfield Heights LLC and Sebastian and Conceita Curatolo, and zone mixed-use District MUD. Application number 21P-0006. SBL numbers 125.01-1-25.1 and 125.01-1-25.2. I believe we have Bill Price with SWBR on the call with us. I believe we will also have Ami Notice of Excelsior Communities, Rob Fornataro, Eric Reynolds, and Marley Finestone with SWBR, and Alex Ammering of Costage Engineering on with us tonight.
Okay. Bill, are you starting off with the presentation here?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman and board members, thanks for listening to us tonight and kind of walking through our application. I don't know who's managing the, Doug or Lori, managing the drawings that we sent over?
I have Brad, our junior planner, on the laptop managing that.
All right, thank you. Brad, if we could start with the first set of plans. Are predominantly black and white drawings. And then we have a second set of renderings. And I think if I could just orient everybody to the site itself, and then go to some of the renderings and walk through the proposal.
Brad, do you have the drawing? It's a costage drawing that has 250 going from the southwest to the northeast. It's a more overall, bigger view than that. You're looking at 250 on the top of that plan. It's this one? I think this is what you're looking for.
Right, thank you.
Is that the one, Bill?
That's it, thank you. So, yeah, and I think the rest of the plans will likely be oriented a little bit differently. But I wanted to show this has got Route 250 running north and south. And in the middle is the intersection that connects to the YMCA and the Penfield Square Project directly west across the street. So the parcel that you see here with a residence and several outbuildings is five acres, a few hundreds under five acres. And then what we're going to do is we're going to add about 1.6 acres, plus or minus of the Sebastian Curatolo property that abuts the east property line of what you see here. So the north property line will extend east, and the south property line will also extend east. And then the new east property line that we're proposing would follow the federal wetland that's out there. And this is a tad out of focus, but you can kind of see that there is a dotted line in there. It's like, you know, a lot of wetlands that you see, it's rather in and out and curvilinear. So we are, this, the property looking to be acquired does not include regulated wetlands or the, that is on the site a little bit further to the east.
So can I interrupt you there for a second, Bill?
Yeah.
So just to be clear, the way the northern property line runs, would it be a straight line, or would it bend over to that wetland? Would it just run straight?
Just run straight, yep.
And then the eastern line, instead of it being that straight up and down line on the drawing, it would become that the dotted line where the wetlands are delineated?
Yeah, probably a few feet off of that line.
Okay, but essentially there.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, go ahead.
Yep. So then, just so everybody knows, the, you know, to the north will be, the suite's corner road is, you know, several hundred feet to the north. And then across the valley, it starts to slope back up again from the stream and the wetland. The topography rises, and that's where Wickham's Farm is located. It's in all their buildings and orchards and ag fields. This parcel, you can see the topographic contours there. It drops approximately 20 feet from the cluster of buildings that are on-site down to the wetlands, fairly flat, as you would expect, through the wetlands. And this is again, like I mentioned. So that gives you a little bit of context. There is some existing trees on-site that are more associated with kind of foundation areas around the existing structures up close to the street. But then as you go downhill, it's just open meadow or grass field, and then the wetlands to the east. And if I could ask if we could look at the, some rendered plans. There, there's a bunch of black and whites here, and then we have a set of rendered plans.
Do you want to go to the site plan context aerial?
That's really, this is fine right here. Oh, yeah, actually, we do have that context aerial. It would kind of show this project in context with what's going on across the street. Thank you. So, yeah, this gives a little better idea of where we are. If that backs out even just a little bit more, you can start to see the subdivision that's located to the southeast. And so what's been approved recently and under construction is the Penfield Square Project on the west side. YMCA's been there for several years. And there's a signalized intersection that this property will be accessed from. There will be no other driveways to the site on Route 250. So this signalized access point does align directly with Penfield Square Project and the Y. So we include the buildings across the front, which are to the kind of center top here. Those represent two 10-unit buildings of townhouses. Those are two stories. We wanted to kind of transition this from the road with two-story buildings. We do have a three-story commercial retail office building on the, would end up being the south side of our entrance and being the southeast corner of the intersection. We come in at the signalized intersection, and directly ahead is a public space. And then we will turn left and get to the north-south road. They're interior to the site and paralleling Route 250. There are two buildings, we call them C and D. One is, one kind of parallels the south property line. And then D is the L-shaped building. And that, those two buildings are connected by a bridge on the second and third floors. The majority of our retail office and commercial space is going to be in the building on the, at the, right at the entranceway. We want to have this facing and having exposure on the south side for people coming down, actually traveling north on Route 250. Right on the west side, the 250 elevation and the elevation on our interior access road. Building D, that L-shaped building, will also have, on the first floor, the entire length fronting on our internal drive will be devoted to commercial, retail, or office space. The building that's kind of to the top right is what we're calling the common house, which will have amenities for the public and for users. Yeah, this gives you an idea of where the mix of uses is. This, the orientation and the relationship of the buildings to one another is the same on this diagram as it is on the site plan. And you see the buildings A and B are, are those townhouses. They have individual entrances and single-car garages. And then on the upper left is the mixed, well, it's a commercial, retail, or office building. Building C at the low level, the lowest level, as well as building D. All of the pink is commercial, retail, or office, and all is publicly accessible. Building E is in the back of the property and at the lowest point of the site. That's a three-story structure, and it is apartments, as is building C and building D. So the one thing about the elevation change here to note is that the front of building D and the front of building C are up at the street level, that interior drive. And then on the back side, they're about 11 feet lower, 11 or 12 feet down from the first floor. And those will be garage units, access from the outside. So the garages are only one bay deep, they don't go under the entire building. We also have some mechanical space down there, some of the vertical transportation elevator. And things like trash is anticipated to be down on the ground level. So we plan on, you know, even though those do have an exposed fourth floor being the garages, that wouldn't be seen from either 250 or from the internal access road. And that's where our largest field of parking is, is... where our largest field of parking is, is tucked in behind the building D and adjacent to the building C and E. If we could go back to the site plan.
Hey, Bill, do you mind? Would it be possible for you to move a little bit further back from your screen? The only thing we can see right now is your mouth. Sorry to say.
Right. I couldn't see myself to.
Thanks.
I could turn myself off. All right.
Wasn't bothering any of the rest of us. Doug has some sort of.
PCTV asked.
Now I've got a complex and I can't. So a little bit about, and we have some diagrams, and I frankly remember if the diagrams are in the first package or the or the second, but let's just walk through this. I want to show you the amount of sidewalks and public access that we have throughout the site here. Coming in from Route 250 and across the street, we have sidewalks coming in on both sides of the street. We do understand there are some, here's our, here's our pedestrian circulation diagram. So our main entrance is shared with Penfield Square across the street. The idea is to come in, and we have another kind of a node right here at the entrance, where we have some on-street parking. We have pedestrian sidewalks on both sides. We have pedestrian circulation up along Route 250, and, you know, sidewalks all around retail office building, sidewalks on both sides of our main road. And this, both the road and the sidewalks will connect to the property to the north. Then we're we're looking to take people to the to the easterly portion of the site, coming down the north side of building D. There, thank you. And we also have a separate access point, and there's a stair in that main, that public gathering space under and in front of the bridge between the between buildings C and D, and the pedestrians can come down through here, get across. There is a little dog park that we're proposing on the on the east, I'm sorry, the south side of of building E. And then in the back on the low portion is where we we do need to put our stormwater management, but we don't really just want it to be a, you know, a water quality pond and then a water capacity or water storage. So we've, you know, put some amenities into it, including a 10-foot walkway around it with connection points to the south property, and then coming along the wetland boundary and extending to the to the north property line. So our our proposal is that people would, say you're on your bike, or you're out walking the dog on, and you're on the east side of the road. Our primary desire is to have people come in along the main entrance, because it will be along the front of our retail commercial building. But we also have access coming in off of 250. It will go behind the parking lot along that south property line. And what we want to do then is ask people to either get ride their bike on this on the street, which that is perfectly fine, or to get off and walk in this commercial zone all across the front of buildings C through the public plaza and across the face of building D. That's really the experience we want people to have. And we want to bring people into this corridor, because we feel this is going to be the one of the liveliest spaces of the entire development, with with the understanding and certainly the the desire to create kind of a, you know, four corners area, but not not just within the site itself, but in conjunction with what's going on across the street. So like, you know, be thinking of this as how is it working in collaboration or in conjunction with what's planned in Penfield Square? So we would cut down south, I'm sorry, east on the on the north side of building D. It says Ped Circulation Route there, because that side of the building, we can actually keep to an accessible route. That's going to be able to be a 5% grade, hopefully a little bit flatter, but minimally 5%, so that it can be accessible. And that's why we, you know, one of the reasons to make such a wide sidewalk and have the street trees and parallel on-street parking in that area is because we want the activity on that side going down to the common house and then to the trail at the east. The ideal situation for us is if all of this is successful, and we certainly hope it and trust it will be, is that, you know, the common house would serve future sections of the development, and the trail would also be extended to the north, eventually getting to Suites Corners Road, and getting to the amenities that are over there, including Wickham Farms. I'll just ask if we could just kind of quickly look at some of our other renderings. We've got some architectural drawings. We have some site plan renderings that are a little bit blowups of some of the public spaces. Yeah, so this this gives you an idea. Now, the the rent, the the blowup areas are going to kind of come into focus here. And the top one is that, you know, that kind of that view that you you're going to see when you come into the the development is to see the bridge, see the public open space. We have seating in there, probably have tables with umbrellas, you know, hopefully getting folks that are working in either in building D or C to come out and use the space. We anticipate having a fire pit in here. But this is all a publicly accessible area. And one of the, you know, the reasons that we put a bridge in was to have a view out through the building, and you'll see it in an elevation that we've got, is to see through that and to see under it and realize that the site is deeper. Some of our early concepts had two L-shaped buildings with the break-in between the buildings further to the to the north. But we felt having the road aligned right on that main opening was a real a real asset to people understanding that this is a much bigger site, much bigger, but there's more to it, and there's a welcoming way to bring people through that space and toward the back. The middle rendering represents a public space that we want to have along our main road to the north before, right at the right at the property line. The reason this is here is really because it's such a an interesting location. The we we plan right now to have overhead trellises, another fire pit, chairs, umbrellas. But the the interesting part of this is that it is elevated. Remember, there we do have that 20-foot drop from the street down to the lower part. And this particular space would be elevated above the the rest of the fields to the north or and it would and it would look to the to the east over to Wickham Farms. So I think this will be a a great location for gatherings. And there are parking spaces below it and in front of it, but you would be high enough that you would see over over that. So we think this is going to be a an attractive open space for people to gather in the evenings or weekends during the day when they're out walking dogs or just, you know, walking through the site themselves. Our 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 kind of third major space is going to be the one on the bottom, and didn't really show all of the walking paths around the the ponds. One is, you know, a regular width, that five, six foot width between the the building and the ponds. But the other path is 10 feet wide. You can see we have a 10-foot wide path between the common house pool area and building E, because we want that use of pedestrians and cyclists to come this direction to get on the walking path. The common house is going to have several amenities. One is, you know, you can see the the hot tub and the pool and the lounge chairs and outdoor other outdoor furniture. Inside will be a gym, business office, and some other other amenities, you know, lockers and different things. If we have some architectural renderings, I'd just like to go through if we could. Okay, so we've got a series of renderings. I think most of the board members probably got this package, but for anybody listening, and I'll explain that this is the interior roadside of the townhouse units. The townhouses have, some of them are end-loaded garages, and some of those are rear-loaded garages. But there are no garages on the front or the 250 side. So the elevations on Route 250, we did not want any any vehicles on that side, and that's devoted to the sidewalk, as well as outdoor spaces for, and actually, there's some of the entrances to units right along the the Route 250 side. You start to get a sense of, you know, these are two stories, but you're getting a sense of the architectural character that we're we're getting at. You know, Rob and Erica are on the call here, and if you have questions about that, but they've done a lot of work to get kind of an agrarian style to this, a farmhouse look to it, starting to introduce materials that are consistent with agrarian architecture, Borden-Batten, some accents of stone, and windows that are, they're black framed is the theme, but, you know, something to give it a touch of modern, along with a series of balconies that are, in some cases, projected, in other cases, they are recessed and flattened into the facade of the of various elevations. Who would you go to the next one? This is that view that I mentioned. This is the view coming in the main entrance from 250, the the traffic signals behind you. And, you know, we will, this public plaza that's to the foreground, you see we have introduced, you know, balconies, you know, some recessed again, some will be projecting on the on the left. And we we have porch overhangs at the ground level, again, to and in full glazing, so that you can see what's going on inside. You can see people's faces and activity. The intent here is, you know, to show as much activity and people inside the spaces, rather than blank walls or solid walls of some kind. So this view coming in is intended, the the three people walking on the right, to the right of them is the commercial retail and office building. So there's a lot of activity going on there. And I mentioned the the two levels of access to between buildings D and C is by this bridge structure. And then you'll be able to see under the bridge structure to the buildings and spaces in the back. You can see we've added some accent of stone. We've got the reverse gables, again, to just introduce some modifications to show that these are not monotonous, all the same architecture. If you could scroll, please. Okay, thank you. So this this represents the elevations of the of the townhouses. And you saw the bottom elevations in perspective before. The top is what you would see from Route 250. Again, there are no no garages on this side. There are, there are main entrances to units. There's some patio spaces from other units out there. You can see there's balconies. We have some large panels of glass. And you can you can leave it here. This is fine. Ah, okay. And then just some some changes in the roof lines, both reversing some gables and then doing some pop-up elevations on that townhouse elevation. This is the retail, commercial, and office building. Again, we're trying to draw some components out of some more historic structures in the town of Penfield. We're by putting the porch out front, a lot of glass, you know, very low. I'm sorry, I forgot the name of the wall at the bottom, but but again, you know, much more glass on that ground level on on all sides of this. So the right-hand side of the upper elevation is right along Route 250. And you see some awnings off of that. And then even on the second floor, looking to put in a kind of a balcony or outdoor space on that second floor. That will that will actually wrap around to the backside of the building, or the view that you'll see coming up 250 from the south to the north. Again, just slight differences in, you know, the materials here, don't want a lot of sameness, but, you know, some, you know, linking elements and and character that is similar in buildings, but trying to mix these up a bit. Not quite sure what's left. Let's see. Okay. So this goes to the, this is just the, this is the elevations to the perspective that you saw of the main entrance. And on the lower side is that north face of building D. And that's that's the the side that we really want. The sidewalk is is very public, very wide, street trees, and that's the accessible route, you know, going paralleling the the side of the building. But this is to show you how that elevation works with uh, how that elevation works with, um, the ground floor being devoted to the commercial or office space on the, on the ground floor and what the entrance, where the entrances, uh, are proposed to go, the amount of glass and glazing that's, uh, that's in that elevation. And then the, you can see the break where we have the floors of, uh, residents above. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I've been talking quite a while and, um, I guess I'd just like to wrap up. I'm sure there's something I'm forgetting, but, um, as, as the town code, uh, goes, we've, we've met with the PRC, uh, several times to, uh, review the concept and the, uh, uh, the program, uh, architecture and site layout. And we've, uh, we do have this to the point where the percentage of, uh, commercial retail office space or non-residential space is 18% of the total square footage, uh, and that the percent of publicly accessible open space is 22%. We have responded, um, to the PRC comments that was sent today. So I'm guessing you just received them and may not have, uh, digested. I, we're happy to talk about any of the questions that were, or I'm sorry, any of the comments that were raised by the PRC. Uh, and also I did submit a, uh, a, a letter responding or providing responses to the 10 mixed-use principles that are in the MUD, uh, manual. And, and I'm also happy to discuss, uh, anything about, you know, what's, what those 10 principles are and how this project aligns with those principles.
I think, Bill.
I'd like to let you ask some questions.
Okay, Bill, if, um, I think it probably might be helpful for some of the people viewing this from home, for you to go through those 10, uh, just a brief, you know, two-minute description of, of, uh, of that for the benefit of the viewers.
Um, you'll have to give me one second here and I'll get it up. Okay. So, uh, the first principle is a mixture of complementary land uses to create economic and social vitality and encourage linking of pedestrians and vehicular trips. So, um, by this, this project including the required mix of, uh, uses, which is in the MUD A-zone is four, uh, uses. So, um, we've, we're proposing that all of the, uh, commercial or retail spaces on the ground level. Um, we had initially proposed some of those uses to be on second and third floors above lobby spaces. And, um, that was not perceived as publicly accessible. So all of that space has been brought down to the first floor with the exception of the standalone, uh, retail, commercial, office building that's on the southeast corner of the main intersection, right at the, right at the entry. Um, we'll be providing, uh, townhouses, uh, one-bedroom, two-bedroom apartments. There is, there are some one-and-a-half bedroom apartments. That's just, uh, something that offers additional space for, for office or, um, uh, visitor use. Um, you know, and all of that is along our, our main frontage road. Uh, so we're keeping that activity and that social interaction up front and is close to 250 and the project across the street and trying to really create as much synergy as we can in that main entrance and not, not trying to have that happen too deep into the site because we think that it's important that, uh, that a lot of commercial is actually going to benefit by being closer to, uh, Route 250 and trying to capture that drive-by traffic, which, uh, we think is going to be much more successful than if we had buried, uh, that commercial use deeper into the site. Uh, we're providing parking, uh, immediately on street, uh, again, to hopefully give the impression, hey, there's people here, there's activity here. Uh, sidewalks are wide, uh, they're tree-lined, there's street lighting. Uh, so we want, uh, that to feel like a very village-like, um, uh, I think that's it for that. Number two, uh, flexible housing alternatives. Um, so in our project, like I mentioned, we're offering townhomes, uh, one, one-and-a-half and two-bedroom, uh, residential units. But if we look across the street as well, uh, and looking at the, uh, the entirety of what's happening in MUD in this particular zone, uh, there is affordable housing across the street, uh, by home leasing and there's also, um, uh, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank. It's not independent care, it's assisted, assisted living. So, uh, I think the alternatives, uh, come from, you know, the combination of the projects, uh, together, but we, we offer the apartments and, uh, and townhouses. The number three is, uh, areas that are safe, comfortable and convenient to pedestrians. So, uh, earlier we showed a, um, diagram of all of the, um, sidewalks and trails in the site. And again, the, the idea of safety comes from having, um, windows and people working in spaces adjacent to the sidewalks and cars parked on the street and people walking up and down the street. It's, you know, just having people there adds to the safety and comfort versus, you know, walking down a sidewalk that you're all alone and the only thing whizin' by you is cars. Uh, so we really want this entire site right from 250 all the way to the back property to be physically, uh, accessible by pedestrians and cyclists. Number four is flexibility in the siting and design to support future changes in the marketplace. So, uh, again, this could be answered on the site basis or on a, uh, more of a district basis. And the responses, uh, on a site basis is our, again, our commercial, retail and office space is, uh, being designed and will be able to anticipate, uh, changes in, uh, in the marketplace in the future, um, mostly because we have just gone through a year of dramatic change in, uh, commercial and retail and office use. Uh, we see the initial uses, um, dominated by, uh, kind of that work-live type space. Uh, but then eventually as we, we see a build-out of all the units and absorption of all the residential units, both on our side of the street and across the street and some of the subdivisions that are to the south of us, uh, these, uh, projects, both, uh, Penfield Square and this project, being able to absorb, you know, the hair salon, the ice cream shop, the, the types of storefront uses that, um, you know, you need a bunch of people to help support. And by having the, having them close to the street with easy, accessible parking, we think that will help contribute. So we think the way, uh, that, and the location of the, uh, commercial retail spaces does add to that flexibility in the future. Number five is walkability within neighborhoods with walkways and trails to encourage pedestrian and bicycle, uh, travel. Uh, I'll just kind of go back to the diagram and just the, the sheer number of, uh, sidewalks and ways you can get through the site from the, from the west, uh, at, uh, and along 250, uh, all the way to the back of the site. There's just really no part of the site that is not accessible. And, uh, the idea is for connections to the property to the north. Uh, there's road connections, uh, two-road connections and four sidewalk or trail connections, uh, to the property to the, to the north. And, uh, we envision, you know, this, uh, layout on somewhat of a, you know, of a grid pattern. Uh, there's really no, uh, dead ends if you're somebody, uh, and, and this project does continue to the north. We weren't looking at, you know, curvilinear roads, um, or any kind of cul-de-sac or hammerheads, that kind of stuff. Uh, we want this to be more of a, of a street network that people have opportunities to turn and, and make different decisions and have different experiences. Okay, so, um, number six is variety of services within walking distance. And again, this is, um, we can look at this, uh, by itself, or we can look at this in context with the YMCA, uh, what's going across the street in Penfield Square and what may end up coming north of, uh, Penfield Square as well. That, um, everything, all the way that the commercial, retail and office space has been sighted in here, it's, it's within walking distance, um, to, you know, everything on the other side of the street. Certainly within our site, we have, you know, two, two ways to get up to, you know, if you were in the back in building E, you have two ways, uh, to walk and get to, up to the main, uh, road and commercial retail area. Um, really no, no limits to being able to walk from anywhere, uh, in adjacent neighborhoods or within this, uh, complex. Uh, efficient use of land with compact cluster development. Um, I think if, you know, you take a careful look at the, the site plan and the way the buildings are, are oriented, we are not, um, we don't have large setbacks, uh, don't have large side setbacks of, of space. We want, uh, we want, again, people working in the buildings to be close to sidewalks. We want people walking on the sidewalks to feel this sense of enclosure, uh, which adds to your comfort and enjoyment of the space. It's just one of those things that helps people feel comfortable. We've provided destinations for them along the way with, uh, places to sit, um, benches along the sidewalks, uh, fire pits that they can go and sit and have conversations or walk into the back, uh, to walk your, you know, take your dog to the dog park. Again, um, we think this is, uh, very efficient, uh, layout and is, uh, probably a more comfortable layout for a pedestrian than it would be for, uh, someone in a vehicle. Uh, number eight is development that supports public transit where applicable. Um, I think unfortunately, uh, we're not in that situation. Uh, but if that does change, you know, public transit, uh, potential stops in the north and southbound on Route 250 are very possible adjacent to this, uh, project, uh, most likely right by the intersection so that people could, uh, walk easily to the transit stops. Um, but, but, you know, unless, uh, before a robust, uh, transit system comes here, the, the site is certainly accessible to any on-call, uh, transit services, ride-share services or, uh, shuttle services, um, you know, to take people to other places in, in the community. So even though it's not a formal bus network, um, we'd like to, like you all to know that curbside, uh, uh, space is available for, for some transit options. Number nine is open space preservation, uh, creation, um, and reduction of impact on natural resources. I think we, we mentioned that the significant natural resource on, uh, in this area is the federally designated wetland and the intermittent, uh, classified stream that, you know, runs through the low spot, uh, of the adjacent property. Um, and again, we are proposing not to touch that. We are proposing not even to acquire the property that has the wetlands or the stream on it. Uh, so this project is, will not be seeking a, uh, wetland, uh, permit. Most, most likely a nationwide permit would be, uh, the most we would have to, but we're just not, we're just not touching the wetland and we're not disturbing, uh, the stream either. The final, um, the final, uh, principle is transportation planning that reduces vehicular demands. Um, this gets into, you know, the purpose of work-live, um, environments or, or mixed use or diversified, uh, neighborhood planning to allow a diversity of uses so that people have the opportunity to either work and live in the, uh, in the same complex. And this is certainly what is very, very possible with, uh, where we've, uh, placed the commercial, retail and office. But if we also look at it from, uh, uh, the MUD and how, how it's going to more successfully develop out in, in, um, collaboration with other, uh, other uses in the area, you know, there's going to be employees over at the assisted living. There's employees for, uh, the YMCA. Um, you know, now we're, we're starting to get to the point where collectively the MUD is, will be successful in, in creating that mix of uses that, you know, people may want to choose to live close to where they work. And this project contributes to, to that opportunity. And by living where you work, you're, or having, uh, routine daily needs, uh, met by, uh, some of the retail spaces, um, you're reducing the number of trips that out, end up out on Route 250, uh, to go to 441 or back up to Webster. Um, you know, is that going to happen, uh, in 2021? Uh, I think you'll, you'll start to see the benefits of it as the units are, are absorbed and, and occupied, but I think over, over time is when we'll really start to see, uh, transportation demand diminishing and, uh, people staying there or walking to the services, uh, that they need. So that's the, uh, 10 principles, uh, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, we'll return it back to you.
Okay. Thanks for doing that, Bill. Nice presentation. Um, I know I have a, a couple of questions for you and I'm sure the rest of the board does as well.
Okay.
One question, what do you see as the demographic of, uh, the target market of people who would, uh, be residents here?
Um, I'm, I'm wondering if I could pump that to Ami if I don't put him on the spot too much. Uh, I did look at a, uh, at a market study and that's kind of why you're not seeing any three-bedroom units here. Um, uh, Ami, could you chime in on that for Okay.
Maybe he's muted.
I'll, I'll give it my, my best shot here. Um, certainly the, um, retirees, um, and then some young professionals, you know, are really kind of that prime market for, um, moving out of, moving out of an existing larger single family with, um, with maintenance requirements, uh, into something that's a little bit, uh, more manageable. Uh, into something that's a little bit uh, more manageable, offers some more amenities. You know, kind of allows them to downsize, but the young, young professionals that uh, you know, want to live in. The town they grew up in, but not necessarily in mom and dad's house. Uh, we don't, uh, we, you know, with the number of two bedrooms and the opportunity for some townhouses. We also see uh, young families that again are uh, maybe moving uh, out of an urban area. Like my, my, my daughter and her family with uh, one or two kids uh, looking to get back into their hometown. So it's not uh, not a hundred percent, you know, fifty-five and older. And it's not a hundred percent uh, young people, uh, but it is a pretty broad mix. I would just say that you probably, the larger, more mature families, uh, kids in high school to middle school, three or four kids. Or let's just say two-plus kids are probably not going to be the market. Everybody else would.
Okay, hence the lack of any three-bedroom residences, right? So mostly one and two-bedroom. Okay, um, the uh. That northern seating area, the pedestrian common space, uh, number two, with a fire pit in the seating. How much higher elevation-wise is that than the parking lot to the east?
Well, um, I, I, I would probably try to get that to uh, the point where it's at least five feet. Or four and a half, five feet higher. Uh, it seems to the point where we could probably. To get it to the right elevation, to get it to a good elevation is actually come from the sidewalk there, up into the space. And the idea is um, you know, rather than dropping it down from the sidewalk uh, on the east side of the street is maybe to come up a bit. And then what it would do is look like a, like a step on a prow above the parking lot. And you can see those lines that uh.
Almost like terrace lines?
Front. It's kind of terraced, you know, and you could, you could, uh, we would develop seating on, on lawns there. Uh, and have that step down.
Okay. The entrances and the elevation for the western side of building D?
Yes.
At least in the renderings, and I, I do realize it's a sketch plan, so. Uh, it seems like there's maybe two entrances. Would do, uh, you anticipate that most entrances to businesses being internal? And these would be almost like uh, main entry doors into a foyer that uh, the businesses inside would have their entrances on the foyer? Or a mini mall type thing, or uh, would you consider having more doorways, uh, if there's more businesses?
Yeah, the answer is yes, we would consider more doorways. But also please recall that the entrance to the right where we have the overhang, uh, that is also an entrance. Into that space as well. So we, we do have three uh, main entrances to the corridor that, that leads to this space. Uh, but if, but if it came out where, you know, we knew we had, you know, a thousand square foot tenant and then a, a two thousand square foot tenant. And then another thousand square foot, whatever that, whatever that would be. Uh, that, that elevation would respond to uh, to a number of, any number of doors uh, up from that.
Alright, so essentially it's flexible, almost like modular type space essentially. Okay, and then the retail building, you're thinking uh, retail shops? Maybe restaurants, something on the first floor and then office space, rental office space on the second and third?
Yes, yeah, the um, you know what? You know, could the, could the second and third floors be, you know, studios or, you know, of some kind? Either, you know, art studios. It's new build and frankly, you know, rent structures, you know, may not. Allow that, uh, certainly office space on, on that second and third floor. Uh, but if we can get any other type of uh, uh, little production, uh, you know, art kind of thing. You know, that would be on those second and third floors. But again, restaurant and retailer uh, is really, you know, product or something interesting in the, at that ground floor is. Is what we'd be interested in having.
Okay, alright, thanks. I'm sure I'll have more questions. Uh, I'd like to open it up to the rest of the board.
I got one real quick, uh, just comes to mind. You got any other similar communities that uh, you guys have tried this before, Bill? Locally firsthand if.
As far as um, Rob or Eric, could you guys help me out? We've done a lot of communities um, with some pieces of this. But if, if I was to tell you we had one that was the exact, I'm sorry. The exact same configuration or mix of uses, I, I, I don't know that I can say that. We, we did.
Yeah, I'd just like to add to that, thanks. Um.
If you could just introduce yourself.
What's that?
If you could just introduce yourself for the record.
Oh, hi, Rob Fornataro, Design Director for SWBR.
Great, thanks, Rob.
I'm also the project manager for this project, so um, near and dear to my heart. Thanks, Bill, for introducing all this and it's great and we're very excited about this project. And I, and I think we have done not exactly like this and that's what's so unique about this. Uh, the way we're approaching this is, is as Bill said, it's a, you know, a real unique opportunity to tie this into some of the, the vernacular that, that has. Has what we feel is, is significant in Western New York, some of the agrarian stuff and some of the, I guess. Architecture um, of that era. So I would say, yes, in, in some urban environments, we've done something very similar, uh, Charlotte Square, um, downtown Rochester. It's actually was three phases and we had um, a market rate component, some for-sale townhomes and then also an affordable component. Three different sites, but all in the same, in, right next to each other, adjacent. And we, we see this along with Penfield Square that we also did across the street being synergistically uh, enabling this, this area. And we're just excited about the walkability of this and the opportunities here. So I would say this is a little unique in, in its approach. And I, I like that we're, we're able to get walkability in a, in a otherwise um, you know, more suburban environment. So we feel this is a great opportunity, uh, along with some of your requirements to, to kind of push that as much as we can.
Thank you. And uh, also I guess I'd ask is uh, as it stands right now, you know, uh. Everything fits in with the zoning regulations, the way you guys got it all put together roughly right now?
Uh, Terry, uh, hi by the way. Um, yes. I would, I would only caution that I, I, I think I put in the cover letter that uh, there, there might be a potential for um. A request on vinyl siding. But not vinyl siding like you're thinking of, you know, it's, it's uh, Gordon Batt and Still, that look. Uh, we're still, we're not sure of this at this point. I just want to point it out. We're still trying to get other materials that are uh, affordable and look like we want them to. Uh, and I, I should point out that um, one of the questions uh, from the. And review committee was to discuss the heights of the buildings and that there is. Uh, either, there's a fifty-five foot maximum height or show justification why. It just, it works out that the uh, we meet fifty-five foot uh, or less in all the buildings. With, with the exception as it's measured from the, the ground behind building uh, D. Uh, we, we do have that fourth floor on that side, uh, you know, where the garages are underneath it. And uh, and therefore, you know, we, we, we do exceed the fifty-five if you measure it from, from that side of the building. So we, we want to, we want to point that out and we'll certainly, you know, show the elevations and why, why it needs to be that uh. To stay consistent with the uh, the architectural roof lines and that you see on the, on the other sides of the buildings. But uh, Terry, I think that's, everything else, you know, it's uh, is in compliance with the, with your regulations.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just, I was just going to add to that quickly if you don't mind, but I just wanted to clarify that. So the, the point on building D that we turned the corner there, basically we've turned the end of it next to the bridge there. That is the portion that's the seventy-plus feet, um, just that, just that one roof right there, that gable roof. The rest of it, I believe, is at about fifty-seven feet if I'm, if I'm correct. So.
Thanks, Rob.
Very, very close to the fifty-five.
Okay, Rob, thanks. One quick question, uh, what about the, uh, which buildings are apartments and which ones are townhouses? Or is it?
Up front, A and B are townhouses and C, D, and E are apartments.
C, B, and E are apartments?
Those, uh, those C, D, and E have uh, main entrances, uh, lobbies, central corridors. Elevator and stair, stair towers. The buildings, the townhouses, buildings A and B up along uh, Route two fifty all have individual entrances. Both from the garage space as well as from outdoors.
Okay, and the uh, and the, the, the common house area, the pool area in the back there. You say it's open to the, the public or just the residents?
No, it's, it's, it's open to the public. Anybody can, i- i- it would be membership.
Oh, okay.
And, but it is, you know, you don't have to live in the community to come and use the facilities.
How would you control that though? I mean, as a community, just letting?
Memberships, um.
Oh, the membership, so they would be, so you say public, they'd have to have a membership. They just can't drive in there? And just drive in the back and go in the pool, use the fire pit?
Well, the, the use of the fire pit, you can just drive in and use this, same as the, you know, any resident in the neighborhood could come walk their dog. Uh, you can sit and use the, the public spaces. But I think when it comes to being in and using um, the pool and lockers and gym facilities. We'd want to control that with membership. Not, we don't anticipate all, all residents being members either. You know, we would hope they most would be.
Right.
And please remember, we're, we're thinking, the reason it's kind of located here is that uh, you know, with the success of this, we would anticipate. Uh, additional phases going uh, north of this. And uh, you know, that, that particular common house would, is anticipated to serve others in the future too.
And you uh, guys don't foresee any issues with the, using the one signal light in front for all, all the residents here? And across the street with the YMCA and the other Penfield Square project, you don't foresee that being an issue? Getting out on Route two fifty?
Alex, if I say something wrong, uh, please chime in, but I, not at all, Terry. I, I think it's uh, the lane widths, uh, turning curb radiuses uh, will all be adequate. There's um, adequate depth uh, from Route two fifty back into the site for queuing. Uh, we are currently showing a right turn lane uh, going out. You know, we'll, we'll have to see if that's actually necessary, but uh, for now, we're, we're showing it. But I, I'm, I'm, we're not concerned, we're, you know, I think at a hundred and thirty-two units, the trip generation would not be. Not even sure if the signal wasn't there, if it would warrant a signal.
Really? Okay.
So now if, you know, start adding uh, properties, you know, and expanding this to the north, that equation would change. And uh, ultimately, you know, if this does proceed, you know, there would be an access point out on the Suites Corner in the future.
I'm all set for it right now, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, you guys have questions?
I have a few questions. Um, Bill, the, the townhouses, are those rental units?
I, yes, they are.
Okay.
Yep.
And will there be uh, bike racks on the site?
Yes, there will.
Okay.
Yep, well, probably uh, the, the three or four locations I can immediately think of would be near the retail. Near our common space, uh, right at the end of the, uh, online with the entrance road. Uh, by the uh, public um, plaza to the north. Uh, but it could also be on the other side from the uh, from that public plaza. Because I'm anticipating probably some workers might ride their bikes and we could put it uh, closer to the building D on the. Uh, between the building and the sidewalk, um, and then again down at the uh, common house.
Okay. And do you have any plans for electric vehicle charging stations on the site?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
The exact number I, I, I can't answer, but um, Excelsior Communities, uh. Ami has put uh, charging stations at all of the communities that they, uh, that they own across uh. Monroe County and the Rochester area. I, I'm not sure, I, they, they just picked up a, a Penfield project. And I, I can't speak to whether that was an existing facility that they purchased. And I can't speak to whether that has uh, V charging or not, but this project will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yes, oh.
No, Bill Bastian, sorry.
Yeah, I, I have one question. One of the uh, uh, big attractions to this, as I see it, is the uh, YMCA across the road. Would you agree?
I would agree, sure.
Yeah, uh, the problem I see is crossing two fifty. Crosswalks work fine now and then. I live near four forty-one, I have to cross four forty-one and it's a pain. Uh, even though we have crosswalks, we have traffic lights and so forth. But I, in, in my travels around the country, I have come across where they have um, developed um, tunnels. Under major roads for people to cross them without waiting. It, it works quite nice. They're all over Colorado Springs, I can tell you that. Uh, so have you given any thought to an alternative way to cross two fifty, uh, either a tunnel or a bridge?
Well, to be honest with you, Bill, no, I hadn't before you, before you introduced it. I, I would only say, I, I can't even really think uh, right now what um. What the process with DOT would be like to try and get something like that. But um, I, and I, and I don't know if they have thresholds. I, and I, and I don't know if they have thresholds for users that might benefit from it or, uh, but I, I think, um, what we had been anticipating is, you know, some improvements to the, uh, to this side of the intersection. Um, you know, it already has the pet signals. Um, it has traffic light heads that face into the site. Um, but if we can, you know, work together, think of ways to make that, um, uh, that intersection safer. Uh, I know that we talked about this with town staff in some early meetings and, and the, and the desire to get the, the speed on Route 250 reduced. And how ultimately we, we kinda see, you know, all of this building, uh, creating kinda, you know, with buildings up closer to the road, creating this, uh, this village character that people would, would hopefully start to slow down. I know that's going off tangent on your point, uh, because I, I hadn't thought of your point, to be honest.
Yeah, well, they, um, they work quite well, tunnels especially. And they don't look like a tunnel that you would think of. It's, it's, it's just a path under the road. Um, it's very safe. It's unobstructed. It's unimpeded. So I would give that some serious consideration. I think that would make a, a huge difference for, for a project like this, both to and from the east and west side of 250 for access to the YMCA. So that's, that's the only comment I have.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Jim, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I do. Um, th- this is an awful lot to take in for a, for a sketch plan application. So, um, and some of the information admittedly came to us, um, uh, very late here. Uh, so wha- what I'd really like to do is take all the notes that I've been preparing tonight and compare them to the, uh, the mixed-use district manual, um, and go back through some of the notes for the other two mixed-use developments that the board has reviewed and kind of, uh, see if I can find some, uh, some commonalities, uh, with respect to what we asked of those applicants. Um, I also think that we need to hear from the developer. Um, uh, some of the questions that have been posed to the design team, um, I think unfairly are burdening them with questions that really should be, uh, asked of, of the developer here. So, um, if, uh, if I may, um, I'm gonna spend some time this weekend putting together, um, some comments and I'll get those over to, uh, uh, to you and Doug for distribution and, um, that can contribute to where this goes.
Okay. All right. Uh, thank you, Jim. We have, what I'd like, yeah, sure.
Just a point of clarification. Uh, Jim, uh, the information that you're talking about is the response to PRC questions and the, uh, 10 points. Um, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. But, but the materials that have been presented tonight, you've had since the 29th?
Yeah, that's correct. But, you know, you presented us with sketch plans. So, you know, we don't have dimensions. You're sharing with us now some of the dimensions. You're sharing with us now, uh, how you envision the details, how, how you pull this plan together, what these common areas consist of. So you're, you're really sharing your information then was graphically presented to us. Um, and that's, of course, the, the purpose of a public hearing, um, to get some information that we can, uh, consider in the approval process, right? That's, that's what we're here for.
But dimensions don't come in a sketch plan.
Agreed. But, you know, we're hearing some things now. For instance, you know, when I think about a height of 55 feet maximum, that you could go over with a little justification, well, now I'm hearing 70-plus feet. That's not a change so slight. That's a pretty significant change. One of the things that we try to consider, um, in our review of mixed-use developments is, um, how we're carrying our review of mixed-use developments through all of the applications that have come before you and are yet to come after you. So, you know, that's, that's a pretty significant bump. If we grant you approval for 70-plus, uh, feet, um, what happens to all the next, uh, mixed-use applications where people come to us and, and quote-unquote justify 80 feet or 85 feet? So, you know, these are the things that I'm talking about, the, the new information that are, that's not easy for us to, to receive, uh, you know, in this forum and, and, and payment. And so.
I think you've, you've, you've picked on one particular aspect that we, we need to clarify that for you, which we will do. Uh, it's a very, very small portion of the roof. It's not the entire roof and it's not gonna, uh, uh, it's, it's just a very, very small. It's not the entirety of any one building.
Fair enough.
And it is in response to a specific PRC question that we got, that we gave you that dimension. So I, I personally think that's a, a preliminary plan detail. But as far as the, the overall concepts, let's, why don't you take a look and make sure that you're, that you're comfortable?
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah. Hey, everyone. This is, uh, Eric with SWBR. I figured I would just make one clarification on that, um, since we are talking about it. The, uh, 70-foot dimension is measured to the top of the ridge of the sloped roof, just as a point of clarification. The eve of those roofs, uh, is a, uh, is only 40-so feet.
Thanks, Eric. We'll, we'll send along, uh, to Doug, a, uh, just a quick elevation that shows where that is and, and just how limited it is.
Okay.
We didn't wanna not answer the question.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, what I would like to do at this point is open up for public participation. And just as a reminder, you can call in at, uh, 585-340-8771. That's 585-340-8771. Or alternatively, visit penfield.org and make your comments electronically. There should be a link to this meeting on the, uh, homepage of the website. We do have a caller on hold and this individual has been on hold for quite a while. Um, so I don't know if, uh, Brian and team downstairs, we have Kevin Fitzpatrick from 12 Chatworth Circle, um, on the phone. Hopefully he's still on the phone. Kevin, are you, are you there? And, are you there?
Yep. I'm, yep, I'm still here. Can you hear me?
Uh, we can. Downstairs, if you can, uh, turn him up a little bit, volume-wise, that'd be great.
Okay. Can you, is that better?
That's, uh, that's much better. Kevin, go ahead.
So just, uh, just a few, uh, a, a few comments. Uh, I, um, actually for, uh, Trent Pierce, I do work for the YMCA. I'm the chief operating officer. So my first two comments actually just have to do, uh, with the Y. And part of it has to do with the traffic light. So, um, just so you know, there is a maintenance fee that the Y splits with, um, home leaking across the street. So once that is, um, complete and signalized, I think we need to come to an agreement as to what, um, your share of that maintenance agreement would be. That's really how, when the ma- when the traffic signal was put in, we actually looked at that and that was an agreement with the town that other users, we'd be able to charge the fair share for that maintenance agreement for the traffic light. So the other thing that I would say is also that you don't think you need a left turn lane. I would actually see that, look at your traffic count. At being worked at that location for 13 years, it is quite busy. And if you're not able to get the state to reduce the speed limit, and as the town knows, as the Y and some other, uh, businesses, we petition the state to bring that speed limit down, they did go to 50 from 55, but it still is a long, a long run where people are going. So I would say you wanna, you probably want that left turn safe lane, turning lane that is, that is coming out. So th- those are my two comments from the Y. Now I'll put my, a, a different hat on and this is actually, I'm sitting in my recliner here, you can't see that, but kinda nice, uh, uh, that I'll, I'll, I'll put a different hat on. And actually, from being somewhat as part of the mixed-use, um, development and going through that two, two-and-a-half-year process, um, I applaud you on the design that you came. I think it's about 80% of what I would have envisioned, what a design would be for, um, for the mixed-use. A few just comments that I would say in there is I'm not sure the site itself, the way your buildings are with those townhouses to 250, actually present itself in a nice, open, welcoming, um, mixed-use area. Really, the only way to get in there is that one, uh, driveline. So with that building presenting itself and opening, everything for the mixed-use is sort of in the back there, from behind those buildings. Whereas they went to great length with home leaking across the street to make sure that frontage was sort of opening. So it's, it's compatible opening where the Y parking lot is. And as you drive down, you see all of that opening. Driving down 250, you're not really gonna see that openness or what's there. So again, just to win the site, in my mind, presenting itself, I'm not sure meets sort of what we were thinking as a, uh, as a committee when we put the mixed-use, uh, together. I think the other thing, as you look at that, we really talked about streets and accessibility. I think you've done a good job of putting that together. I would challenge you, I don't see any bike lanes that are in there. That we're talking about lanes and different things like that. I'm not sure how bikes are able to traverse the area back and forth. You know, I can't tell from the site frame where all the sidewalks go, but I guess I'd challenge you to make that more welcoming. Again, making sure that there is transportation, whether it's walking, whether it's scooters, whether it's bikes, something like that, I think you need to, uh, you really need to look at as you, as you put that together. So, and then my, my last comment is just more, uh, comment as of the mixed-use district together. Maybe this is more not as you as developers, as designers, but also as the board, is to sort of challenge you to say, if a mixed-use is really gonna be successful, there has to be mixed-use. And while you have all the components of the mixed-use in the building project and in the building plan, if you just look across the street to the Penfield Square project, that's a mixed-use use also. They have not been successfully attracting commercial tenants to that. So if we're not able to attract commercial use to the building or to the location, it really doesn't become mixed-use. It just becomes apartments and townhouses like anything else in Penfield. And it doesn't give that mixed-use district a feel that's trying to be created. So I don't know what there's incentives, a way to try and look to make sure that those areas that you're looking at, whether it's commercial, whether it's first-floor retail, whether it's office, how can we guarantee that those are gonna come to fruition? And again, you can't say, you know, businesses have to move here, this and that, but it really doesn't create that mixed-use area if there's no commercial use in it. And at this point, Penfield Square doesn't have that, uh, in there. So I fear somebody on the mixed-use, on the mixed-use planning committee, it's not gonna be successful if we can get commercial, um, renters and retailers in there. Again, as, as a developer and a designer, that's not here from, it's just a problem that's inherent at the, um, with the mixed-use. So those are, those are just a few of my comments. I'll let anyone comment on those if they, uh, they like.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay. At the moment, we have nobody else on the line. I don't see any more written correspondence. Uh, again, 340-8771, if, uh, you would like to comment, uh, publicly right now. You can also call the town planning department and, uh, express your comments to them. Uh, that number is 340-8640. 8640?
Don't call it right now, 'cause there's nobody upstairs, but, you know, after.
Yeah, don't, don't, well, if you call right now, it'll just ring and ring and ring. You can, um, you can also send an email in with your comments or you can use that, uh, US Postal Service and, uh, assuming you have the correct postage, you should, should reach the town hall with your comments. So, okay. Um, any more comments from the board? Board members? Let me do a quick check of my trusty computer here to see if anybody else has called in. It looks like, uh. Okay. All right. Looks like we have Ami Notice. Isn't he the, uh, developer?
Yes. Hello?
Okay. Hello, Ami, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, I'm, I'm on the Zoom and earlier I was trying to answer. Bill kinda passed the mic to me and for some reason I wasn't able to get myself off mute. So I figured I'd call in and, and comment on the, uh, the question that was pushed my way. Um, somebody, somebody asked, um, who are targeted audiences for this project? Um, and I know that I, I had a con- specific conversation and one of our ideas for this project and why we felt Penfield was a good kind of area to, um, put this project in is because there's a lot of people that are, that own homes and they're kinda trying to potentially downsize to an apartment kind of or townhome kind of area where, you know, maintenance or landscaping or snow removal and those kind of things are done for themselves and retire. And those were the kind of people that were, we were potentially trying to target as well as younger people that wanted to live near their parents who lived where they grew up. Um, and our idea was that we were gonna offer special concessions on, on rents for current Penfield residents. So our, our idea and our, um, I guess, goal for this was to really provide and bring an alternate option for current Penfield residents that like the area and wanna stay in the area, but they don't necessarily have an area where they could downsize to and rent and kinda have, uh, the rest of the items kinda taken care of for them.
Okay. Good. Thank you for that.
All right. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate you guys taking the time to hear this project.
Sure thing. All right. So... We currently have no other callers or, um, electronic submissions. So, Ami, thank you for those comments. Bill, rest of the team, uh, very nice job. Uh, process now is, um, we will be discussing this and generating a letter. And, uh, a letter will probably be, uh, completed or put out, uh, in two weeks. Um, a lot of, uh, a lot of us like to gather our thoughts and let it sink in and, and, um, and then put that together. So Doug, did you have something you wanted to say?
We just wanted to put out maybe as a general note, um, to everyone who might be watching us, that, um, we do keep the comment period open for the board. Uh, we do keep that comment period open for a week after the public hearing. Um, so if you do, if somebody watching does have additional comments or thinks of something, you know, after the meeting, uh, you know, they can send it in either to, to the phone number and email you, you stated before, to the planning department and we'll make sure that, that the board is apprised of them.
Yes. And, uh, if they come back with, uh, preliminary and final, there will be another hearing much like this, uh, in which you have another opportunity to express your, um, comments. Okay. Uh, guys, any final statements? Thank you. Uh, you know, they're not necessary, but.
Appreciate it. Appreciate you taking the time to look at it and, uh, get to understand it. It's, uh, took us a lot to develop it and I understand it's a lot to digest. Um, but town staff has helped us out a lot and, uh, our, our owner-developer has, uh, uh, really. town staff has helped us out a lot and, uh, our, our owner developer has, uh, really tried to, uh, understand the market and the whole concept of, of mixed use and what this means. And, uh, we just appreciate your time reviewing. Thank you.
Sure, sure thing. And as, uh, I'm sure you know, this is a relatively new district for us, never been done before in Penfield. And, um, I think I can speak for the entire planning board in that we take this, uh, very seriously. We wanna make sure that we do the best job for our residents as well. I'm sure you also wanna do the best job that you can. And, um, uh, COVID has thrown a, a big monkey wrench into everybody's lives and it, as such, it also affects things like this. And, um, so there's a lot of unanswered questions that, uh, I don't know if anybody, anybody has an actual definitive answer for. But, uh, we just need to do the best job we can and come out with the best, uh, set of projects that we can. So, well, with that, thank you all for, for coming.
Thanks very much, guys. Appreciate it.
Good night, everybody.
And we will call, we'll call this hearing closed.
Thank you.
All right, we need to finish up our-
Work session.
Our work session, our business. Just, um, uh, quickly go over our public hearing agenda items.
Do you wanna start with mixed use? It was the last one we did, since it's, it's fresh in your minds? Or do you wanna start back at the, with the first application?
We could go backwards if, um, everybody else is good with that.
Sure.
All right, I think, uh, some of us, uh, have stated that they'd like to, a little bit of time to generate their thoughts and, and write them down. So, um, that, but any other comments right now I think are certainly welcome, um, from everybody.
I'm talking about the mixed use.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I was over there just real quick yesterday looking at that and I went over there to Penfield Square. So I- I'm sorry? Oh, sorry. Yeah, so I was over in Penfield Square yesterday looking around, see how that's going, 'cause similar. And I agree with Kevin that spoke earlier that, uh, all those commercial properties were, you know, for sale. They have a Realtor for sale now. And I know that was a big item back when we looked at that project and approved it, getting, uh, you know, retail and offices and things of that. So it is gonna be an issue, be it COVID or whatever. So I agree with that one being a major concern. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Sure. I think that, you know, this is, this definitely is one of those chicken and egg things that, uh, we, I think we have a pretty good idea of what we ultimately want this to look like. How to get there and the timing of that is the challenge. And, you know, everything that I've heard is that there's a shortage of, you know, they call it inventory with housing and, um, housing that, uh, you know, people like my kids can afford and, and that wanna live in Penfield, there, it's a challenge. Uh, as well as just housing stock in general. So there is, I think, a, not just a perceived, but an actual need for those types of housing units. And, um, we need to figure out how, how's a process gonna work where we have viable commercial, you know, where it's that live, work, play environment? It's a neighborhood that people live in, but there's also other things to do. And I do think that they have done a, a good job with the pedestrian circulation in there. I think that, um, you know, one thing might be nice. I, I, I understand, uh, the caller Kevin's point on that open, that sort of arms wide open feeling of Penfield Square to two fifty, and this seems a little tighter. I don't necessarily know if that's a bad thing or if it's going to give the impression to people to, hey, stay out, this is a private development. You know, that, that proposed glass bridge, the, the way the entrance goes and that the, the retail building is angled. You know, I'm wondering if, um, we might be able to ask the applicants to, if they have some sort of 3D rendering that's, you know, a tour in cyberspace, like I remember years ago, we did with, uh, Walmart, uh, up at Baytown. And nothing crazy, but something that would give an idea of, okay, this is really what it's gonna feel like and look like. It may be a, uh, very worthwhile exercise. I also think that, uh, Bill's idea of the tunnel across two fifty is something that, you know, we definitely need to figure out how to plan for something like that, whether it's a tunnel or a bridge. Because if this, if the east side, we don't want two completely separate, um, and distinct and inaccessible neighborhoods on either side of two fifty. We want it to be an integrated community there. And we do need to figure out a way to get people across that road. You know, I know there's, Eaglevale has a tunnel underneath, uh, Turkhill Road. You know, I've seen tunnels around. It's obviously not impossible. I, I, um, you know, this project may not justify it, but once things are built to the north, and maybe it ends up being further to the north, so that it's more in the center of the mixed use district. I, I don't know. I just, I, I think, Bill, you brought it, I, I think you brought up a good point with that.
Yeah, I, um, experienced it at my daughter's house in Colorado Springs. A road similar to two fifty, they had a tunnel. Uh, it was seamless going from one side to the other. But if you had a crosswalk and you had to wait for a traffic light, you know, it's, it's, it's an obstacle. It really is. Uh, so I, I think they need to give that serious consideration. A bridge is probably a little more difficult unless it's ramp. Uh, steps are not favorable, but, um, you need to think about that.
Yeah. Or pole vault or something.
Yeah, yeah, we could do that. Maybe, uh, I don't know, one of those large human slingshots or something to get people across.
Right, right.
But, uh-
Might not be ADA compliant, though.
No, I don't think it would be. It'd end up like I'm feeling right now.
Right. All right, other comments? I know I got us off track with the pole vault and that, so, but getting back to a serious discussion.
You're bringing up a good point. One of my notes is I wanna talk to maybe the, somebody at the DOT and say, hey, what's the possibilities? How do we do this? What are the challenges? Is it, where could this possibly work? So, I don't know. I think it's a great idea. I just don't know the logistics from the DOT on how to accomplish it.
How to make it happen.
Yeah.
So guys, not for nothing, but it's incumbent upon them to tell us. If, if, if they believe that the amenity that is the YMCA is a, a renting feature of, of the community, that they're trying to get approved, they need to tell us how they're gonna get people over there. And that incumbent upon us.
Well, I agree with that, Jim, but I think part of it is, part of doing this whole mixed use thing, it should have been thought out maybe in the development of the mixed use. Saying, how am I gonna get people from one side to the other? Is there, I mean, we should have done maybe a little more homework in that, saying, hey, DOT, can we put a tunnel somewhere? Or can we put a bridge somewhere? So that we can link the two sides.
We go back to the dialogue that we had with the folks at Penfield Square. We had a lot of discussion about how they were gonna get across that, that entrance road. And in fact, um, the, the striping and the changes in the curb cuts was changed, I believe, two times to address our concerns there. And that's a hundred and sixty foot into the project. What we're talking about now is, is, is right there.
Right there.
It's right across the street. It's, it's a different animal. And I, I, I don't disagree with you, Mike. Feeling out the DOT is certainly worthwhile. I just, you know, I, I think one of our comments to this applicant is, needs to be, um, whether or not they believe that to be an important feature-
Right.
-of, of the community and how they intend to provide access.
Right.
And let them come up with some.
Well, I agree with that. I'm just saying, is the DOT gonna say, well, the intersection of Sweets Corners and two fifty the best location for a tunnel because of providing a mid-block of the whole south side of, from Atlantic for the mixed use development? I mean, maybe the YMCA intersection is not the point. Maybe they-
Further north.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I'm, I'm fine with having them have that conversation. I'm thinking I just would like to have a sidebar conversation to either, A, confirm that, or-
Right.
Yeah, I think it would be nice for us to be able to see if we can get a proactive interaction with the DOT rather than as this continues to develop out, try to have some sort of reactionary, um, interaction, which is really how the DOT usually tends to operate with us, is it's, you know-
Reactive versus-
It's reactive. You know, once there's enough accidents, they'll consider traffic changes to, to roads, you know. But being able to, you know, let them know, in addition to the, you know, having the applicant approach them and say, hey, this is something we would like to see. Dot. It's having the town who can say, you know, we're supportive of seeing other, you know, methods of crossing, you know, this road, especially if they're not interested in reducing the speed, which is something town staff has been supportive of, but we have yet to get the DOT supportive of. Um, so being able to have sort of proactive, proactive conversations with them, both from the town and from the applicant, I think would be able to amplify the voice towards the DOT to say the applicants are interested in, and, and the town is interested in finding other solutions to Route two fifty.
Sure. Okay. Any other comments? Questions? All right, so if you can get a letter started and then the rest of us help, uh, put in bullet points and thoughts?
Yeah, so if we just wanna do, do you wanna do something like just, we'll, we'll table it pending. So we'll, we'll formally issue the sketch letter at the twenty fifth, the work session on the twenty fifth. But we'll, we'll start working on and collaboratively drafting, uh, a viable sketch letter that-
Yeah, we don't have to table the application because it's not an actual application. But I will move to draft, to begin drafting a sketch plan letter on behalf of the planning board, uh, for further review at our next work session.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, Lori, you still awake?
I'm here.
I don't think she is. I think we do, we woke her up.
All right, Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right.
All right.
I'm working backwards. Item number two, Jackson Road.
Fifty-seven Jackson Road.
Um... So, uh, what do we need to do to get this, um-
The applicant engineers said that they would revisit the, uh, some of the information on the map that they presented, um, that they would, uh, contact or have the developer contact the owners of the property immediately to the north across from Lot one to discuss ways in which they can create some buffering there.
Right.
And, uh, um, you know, he's got some other revisions to make, uh, consistent with the PRC comments. And, uh, so, um, he, he owes us a recent note.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead and, uh, we'll table it pending receipt of additional-
Well, it's also a sketch plan.
Oh, right, that's right. Oh, my gosh. So why don't we just put that in a letter?
We could do that. We could add that in the letter, buffering to the north, consistency with the PRC memo and comments to the PRC memo as well as, um, you know, verifying all of the, the property data on there.
Yeah, we could get a letter going immediately to them, right?
Yep.
Anybody have an issue with that?
No.
Okay. Jim, you wanna, this is yours, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, do you wanna move, uh, to write a letter?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right, we have a sketch letter in the works. Aye. I can't believe. Yes, I can.
It's okay. We did, on this, this agenda, we did accidentally sort of reverse things. We had our preliminary final first and our sketches afterwards.
Item one.
Item one, fourteen ten Penfield Center Road. This one is a preliminary final subdivision and site plan application.
Are we, uh, do we have any deal breakers with this at the moment?
No, it's just table for the resolution. They're gonna address the PRC concerns and then the sidewalk waiver issues in front of the town border.
Okay, so-
This time, we haven't started an approval resolution. We just haven't, haven't gotten around to it and getting to it. Uh, it's been a pretty busy week. Um, staff really only has a couple concerns, you know, and a lot of them were in our PRC memo and it comes down to hydrant or sprinklering Lot three. And, um, because we, we've requested that they discuss that with the fire marshal due to the length of the driveway and their distance from the nearest hydrant. They're gonna have to choose one of those two options or figure out a way they could move the house closer. Um, we haven't heard back from them on whether they've spoken with the fire marshal. The last time we had talked to the fire marshal, they said they had, they had not contacted his office yet. Um, the only other concern we had is that, as he stated, there was a, a formerly a barn structure, um, that would lap over onto, uh, Lot two. We've had a discussion with them, 'cause they, they initially stated it was, it could remain. Um, we sort of pushed back on that and they said, well, we'll take it to the property line. Because it's still, even in its, you know, current condition, it sort of still counts as an accessory structure. So we'd be looking to see if we could get it back to the ten feet. Um, that an accessory structure would be required to be set back. And it sounds like, based on, on recent conversations with them, they're, they're gonna look to totally remove that at some point.
Okay. So can we get, uh, draft approval resolution going?
Yeah.
So that, uh, if all these things are addressed by the next meeting, we can get it off the table?
Correct. Yep. Yeah, we can do that. So because I'm on the table at pending.
All right.
Yeah, I said I did already. I make them-
Did we already do that?
Uh, I think we, did we already, did we do it during the public hearing?
Yeah, we did it already.
Yes, you did.
But I can do it again if you want.
I think it's still valid. It was public hearing versus work session. I don't think there's a legal-
He's amazing.
I mean, he's usually here for work sessions, but I don't believe there's, Pete, there's no issue with that, correct? Whether, whether a vote happened in the public hearing versus a work session?
No.
Okay. I didn't know if there's, there is, you know, we can't take-
You guys, 'cause the, the hearing was over and you, you took your action right up at the diocer.
Okay, good.
Virtual diocer, I guess.
All right, good.
I do think I wrote down the votes, so it's very good. Okay.
Yeah, well, Lori's got it.
Yep.
So we have nothing further to discuss this evening?
Nothing further to discuss at this time.
So with that, uh, I will adjourn. Call us, meeting closed.
Aye.
And, uh, wish everyone a good night and a good weekend. Thanks, everybody.
Yep.
Upstairs, downstairs.
Good to see you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for your participation.